I'd like to call for the Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. And the first committee is Public Safety.
Thank you. I'd like to call for the Public Safety Committee. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first of which is a discussion of the CPRB complaint packet. I thought this was a good place to bring the council back into the fold. Over the past few months, there have been a few iterations to adjusting some of the language. I will say, just very openly, bringing it tonight. I did have a concern I wanted to discuss collectively, and that's in regards to the affidavit section. I wanted to give the opinion from around the table with regards to just the false statements claim to myself as an individual, both prior to board member on the CPRB and also as a, I think we could all use this at any point in our lives. I think that statement can come across as strongly worded and making someone be too cautious or hesitant to submitting a complaint. I think in regards to that, there needs to be consideration to how often does the police department find it prudent to use this mechanism to enforce just false frivolous allegations? I can say as a prior member, definitely having a falsified or just people kind of taking things out of context is not something that doesn't happen, but does it ever rise to the occasion of a warranting punishable by a Class A misdemeanor? And I think our police department does an exceptionally well job between the lines, but sincerely, I want to make sure we're being considered of how often this statement could deter people from not having all the information, being hesitant to submit a complaint moving forward. So put that on the table, but also what I want to identify is the good work that's being manned by the chair. Denise is doing exceptionally well job in my regards. They just attended a community event where they were having CPRB table front-facing, handing out magnets and pins. I think that was always a concern of mine that we were never able to achieve, so I'm excited that this is underway right now. But I want to make sure I'm being considered of any of my opinions coming across as council opinions. I am one of seven or six at the moment, so I just wanted to poll this guy, anyone else feels about this subject?
Yeah, I think it's important to have that false statement language in there. So I agree with that being in there. I think, I think the incident even over the weekend in terms of what happened in Scotia with the candy and the needle thing. I mean, I just think it's really important, which was a false statement. I think it's really important that it's in there, so I'm glad that it did stay in there.
And just for regarding not in favor of it, but I was hoping if the operation council would be here to ask us if we need to have this on, like if there's a legal justification for it. I think your opinion?
We've got the standard format for an affidavit.
Any other questions or comments?
So this is the only add to this forum?
No, no, this is the, this is the remaining change.
This is the remaining change, okay.
So I would like to confirm that it is a standard for an affidavit before, because I do think the language is pretty strong. And so this language is for people who file a complaint?
Yes.
So let's say someone filed a complaint against someone, and then the other person has to, you know, verify that, like if there's more than one person involved, okay? Do they also have to to sign a statement like this? Does everyone that's filed a complaint have to do that?
Based on how the mechanism currently is, yes.
Did you have a question too?
No, I was just saying, I believe that's what happened, Mr. Torto, a couple of years ago, he had a false statement.
Oh, you offered a false statement?
I didn't offer one. Somebody against me.
So Ms. Barash, I had a quick question about the affidavit section, affidavit, sorry. And just with respect to the false statement, narrative that's at the bottom of page five, could you just provide some language that's needed to still pursue that element if there are false by statements?
I'm sorry, can you just, what exactly is the context of your question? You're interested in removing the false statement part?
So based on my judgment, kind of taking a poll of the room, I know it's definitely, the sentiment resides within the community and other elements, but just having that statement there, if it is not openly enforced, could deter someone from wanting to present a complaint?
I can look into that and get back to it at the next meeting. How about that?
Perfect, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, at the top of this, this is a form that before laying information is fully completed to the best of my knowledge and belief. I mean, if that, if we have this statement here, then why are we putting this one at the bottom? Or maybe suggestions for it at the bottom, I can like?
And I do want to give credit to the statement. Captain Mallard did a good job at adjusting because that false statement language was at the top of this form, so he did make the language softer. I had the same thought process, so if that affirmation statement is there, why is the one at the bottom still needed? But then at that point, I felt like this was a Carl form, and it should not reflect that, this should reflect the council's kind of collective view on the subject.
So Mr. Williams, it looks like, are you asking to remove it completely from both sides or just the front side?
My recommendation would be both.
From both, okay. So I can see it really doesn't need to be on the first page because the affidavit continues on the back. It would just be at the bottom. But if you, if you want it totally removed, then I'll do some research on that and something like, you know?
I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, sure.
Excuse me.
Ms. Patrick, sorry.
What does the CPRB want to have happen with that false statement information?
So I had?
That statement, I mean?
So I would say there have been iterations where the form?
Thank you.
So there have been several iterations of the form, I think to get to where the board felt comfortable sending it out, and that has happened. There hasn't been a collective just opinion on that one statement. I did think at the current juncture of where bringing it back to the table for the council was important, just because I haven't had any updates for the CPRB being present. But I think this at least indicates to the community that the form is going through some updates to make sure that they're being responsive to some of the concerns they've had from individuals. Previously, it was an expectation to put in place your employer information. Why is that needed for a police complaint? So it is now presented as optional. I think those types of changes is very considered for the police department and also responsive to the needs of the community. I just think this statement, I felt like important enough to bring forward, and to continue the conversation, and also just to be proactive and share these updates with the community.
Can I keep going? So, but it is punishable, right? I mean, it would be a Class A misdemeanor, punishable, right, if they did do a false statement?
I would imagine anything would be?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm just saying. So I mean, that gives them, I guess, it's almost like being, not kind, I'm not, I'm looking for the right word, but it's almost, you know, for the person that's putting in this statement, I mean, we're saying it pretty clearly, don't put in a false statement because you could get in a heck of a lot of trouble if it was a false statement. So rather, but I mean, I'm not saying it should be in there twice, but, you know, it gives them a heads up that they really, really need to be telling the truth because there's repercussions if, if not. I mean, what if somebody doesn't tell the truth and then they didn't know that by not telling the truth, they could be up for this misdemeanor?
And that's where I'm interested in Mrs. Barash's findings, because is that just a blanket understanding for any documents meant to the police department, do you then have to say, hey, we're open to hearing any complaints, don't lie to us, because if you do, you're going to jail? I feel like that makes a disingenuous process. I'm making the light of this entire form, but I want to make sure we're not missing instances of people submitting because they don't have all the information and they're uncomfortable with presenting something that misaligns with what actually happened because they're in an emotionally distressed state, Mr. Farley?
Yeah, so I, I think I agree with pretty much everything I heard here. I think we should acknowledge the fact that this body exists for a very specific reason. And if you take into account why we have the review board, then everything that comes out of it should be informed by its purpose. And I do think that acknowledging the imbalance of power between someone who is making a complaint and the system as the operator now is important to do. If not, then it does come across a little disingenuous. However, I understand your point around like people need to be aware. So I'm wondering, like, is there a, is there a midpoint where, where people will be informed, but it doesn't necessarily discourage, because, you know, if someone's making a complaint, especially if you're complaining against the police, there's investigators there, there's like, you know, you don't want them, anything that you, your perception or what your experience was to come across as false, and then you're in trouble. So yeah, I wonder if there's a midpoint? And, and is this, I know standard for affidavits, is it standard for other police review boards? I wonder?
Yeah, I really hope to be true, hopefully Ms. Barash's findings identifies that perfect language, but I'd be interested in if this isn't back required, if there's a midpoint, but at least we have the conversation. I think that means better to the community also. Ms. Porco?
Yes, thank you. So Ms. Barash, could you tell us also when you're doing your review, what section 210.45 of the penal law is? And is that, does that mean, is it referring to perjury? It doesn't really, it kind of engulled on to say that hereby affirm the following statements are in fact the true and dependent on perjury, so I'm not sure if that's redundant or not. And additionally, so when someone files a complaint against the police department, and then the police department has to, then a police officer, whoever has to answer, is this statement also on their affidavit that they swear out?
I would have to look, but I can get back to you early.
But yes, if a police officer is giving a statement in the other direction, it's also a proposal of an affidavit.
I want to know if the statement was on the affidavit that the police officer saw.
Okay, I can check into it. I mean, the, an affidavit is generally, you know, I swear or I firm, and then the person, you know, signs, sometimes it'll be notarized. It's really, it's not, I don't think that it's required to have a statement if the council would like to remove it. It just, you have to weigh the, you know, the positives and negatives of it. Because an affidavit, I'm sorry, it starts at the top, you know, being duly sworn to poses, and then at the end it's signed, so that makes it into an affidavit anyway.
So I just wanted to be sure if swearing to and having this word is on, has to be on this side, that it's on both any affidavit that has to do with a blanket file?
Absolutely. I will check into that.
Thank you. So just a little bit of information on Ms. Barash's sufficient enough, so proceeding along. The second item on the agenda is update regarding the change in Front Street. So one way, Ms. Porco?
Thank you. So at the last meeting, we had a discussion, we received several emails. Our chief engineer came and gave us some information. He sent out information to the residents in Stockade, he has some findings, so if you wouldn't find comfortable, Mr. Waller may just give us an update.
So recap, what Ms. Porco says, I'm sorry, President, sent out the options to the Stockade neighborhood, the East Front Street neighborhood. We received several emails back, which I forwarded for your reviews, and the conclusions are inconclusive. Whatever we do is going to upset some people and going to make some people happy. And it depends on where you live and how this is literally going to affect your commute and your doorstep. I included option four, which was suggested by Ms. Kelling, I call it, the Stockade, because that was an option that I was kind of kicking around because it is the most, what would be restrictive option. If you were really looking to make the biggest impact, then you would do something like that. However, it is restrictive. I did reach out to Mr. Fusco once again at the apartment building, and he does believe that if we were to go this, he could make John Street work to come into the back. So there is that. I did speak with Chief Burns about fire trucks because trucks would not be able to negotiate these turns, and he would simply have to just go up the wrong way, the wrong way, like sirens. If there is an emergency, it is what it is. One of the other things in the notes, if you look, parking came up several times. A lot of people want more restrictions on parking, but if we restrict parking, the people that are parking there are going to say, where do I park? So, I mean, we have all of it. We have, I do have the, there was a very nice table that was sent out late. I don't know if you guys have this table, very nice table I can send out. It was a summary of all the Stockade people that came a little late. But, you know, it's all over. Some people don't want it to change. They like to get to their, you know, if you live on Front Street and you're in the Stockade, that's an easy way to get home. If not, now you're going to have to go John Street, or you're going to have to go College Street. So it's a little bit more of an inconvenience, but we are trying to cut down on the cut-through traffic. So I don't have any formal recommendations. If you would like a formal recommendation, and I can dig into this and, and make one, it just wouldn't be at this particular meeting. I thought we were going to discuss the results that kind of we have.
So I think my comment, are there any immediate questions or concerns? I think it's recognizing, to your point, Mr. Waller, there's no clear decisive win-win. I think it's going to negatively impact some, and I think to the degree that is where I would request a formal recommendation, just to ensure that it's taken account of your expertise. But I appreciate just Porco for bringing this on for discussion. I think regardless of the fact that response is needed for that area, and I think being overly cautious and not wanting to make the wrong decision, I don't think that's responsive government. I think it's understanding that, hey, we're not going to do everything great, but we're going to try. And I think the effort is worth the, the means and the uncomfortability initially. Ms. Porco?
So, yeah, and thank you for the work. And I would also agree that if we could get a formal recommendation, and I read through all the various emails, like people wanted different options. And I don't even know if we have any two people to be on one option, but it's going to, and for me, and I'm sure that this is what you'll do, that will get the result that people are seeking with the least amount of disruption that's down there. So I, that's what I would think that, you know, would be the direction. We're not going to make everybody happy.
No. Whatever option we move forward, we just make sure there will be a call for public hearing. So there will be another chance for people to weigh in on the option that is presented. So, you know, this won't be the last. This was the, the, you know, reaching out to the neighborhoods. You know, I, next public hearing will not be reaching out to everyone at the neighborhood. If they want to come, they can come and make their comments. And then after we do that, I mean, it's a matter of changing signage and doing some things in house, so I don't think it will be the end of the world. But sure, I can move forward with, you know, what we're thinking. Yeah, like I said, there was nothing that was, nothing that came back conclusive. It was, it was a scattershot of everybody with different opinions. We'll look at parking a little bit. I was hoping that that planning commission would come through for the apartment complex before we made some of these decisions. That hadn't yet. I will talk to Jack Conley about it, just because that is going to be a fairly large development right on this street. So with regards to construction vehicles, this would be, everybody has to abide by this, so everyone's going to have to, to look. You know, another thing you could, you would read in these is that the side streets, they don't want any more traffic. The one does want to go one way, I believe, the route, so that would be part of that. So it would be probably a double public hearing to make a two-way street one way, two two-way streets one way. So.
And how many houses, how many residents overall does this impact? Not just the people that responded, you know, that number?
Well, I would, I mean, I would, you would have to count the residents of Front Street and the Stockade, so it would affect, significantly affect the two neighborhoods. So I wouldn't just count the East Front Street neighborhood. I would, I would have to count Stockade, because if you're trying to get to, remember, Green Street is one way in the opposite direction. So if you live on Green Street, you're taking Front Street, and then you're taking your left at Lawrencee, and then, and then you're coming down Green Street to get there. So, so now you would be coming Erie all the way either to, you know, North Ferry Street or, or another area, just going up John. I mean, John Street will get more traffic. John Street is going to be essentially the gateway into East Front Street for most people. And that's where, at BL's and at Uncle Feds.
Thank you. How many apartments are planned there? Thirty-four, forty?
That's what I don't know.
So you're going to have, I mean, there's more than enough parking that they're planning. They actually wanted some more green space in their, in their, in their design for that area, but, you know, you have to take into effect, you know, you have fully just the busy cars leaving there. You know, they're all going to be heading, you know, so that's, that's another.
And, and I mean, option, option four essentially turns John Street one way, and that's something I have to look at, because if you have a street that's two-way, but no one can get to it, then it's really only, it'll only really go for two-way to get to the parking lot at BL's and the parking lot at the Amazing Grace Transportation, because otherwise, no one from Front Street would actually be able to access, access that.
Ms. Moverian, any other questions or comments, Ms. Porco, your next steps?
Also, if you were comfortable with the recommendation for us?
Sure.
Yeah, and just, I thought, just send us the list of individuals that you were showing, the chart?
Yeah, the chart I got on Friday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other issues to the Public Safety Committee in our manner of motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, like the call order of government operations, we have one item on the agenda as reviewed to amendments made to section 183-6 of Schenectady City Code clarifying the subsequent forms of identification, authorization for business owners and operators for business certificates of use application. Public hearing was on 10/27/25. I believe no one spoke at that portion of the public hearing. Any thoughts, comments, questions on that? Okay. Before we close out?
We have, we have to move it?
No, public hearing now.
I'll accept the motion to move it.
So?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Okay, and before we close out with government operations, Mr. Moverian, based on what, you know, what we experienced going through the budget sessions, I would like you to call a special meeting, a special maybe finance committee meeting for Monday, 5:30, I mean, we can meet before our larger council meeting, where we would invite the commissioner of finance here to present to the council under oath around our munis, accounting, and all of the questions that we had that were around our CBP funds and just the overall fiscal status of the city and the whole entire reconciliation process.
Any member can call a special, like, any member can call a special committee meeting or a special city fund meeting?
Sure, I figured that it would be relevant for you to do that because it's a financial.
How, how do we propose doing that? I mean, just go ahead and call? Do we need two members or do we need just one member?
Two minutes with calls plus?
I do, I'm looking up right now. Give me one second.
A member can call or two members? I think it's one member. Just clarify that.
Sure.
And so you're looking for a finance committee meeting?
Yeah.
A special, okay. Standing, so section 28-29 of the city code would be the relevant section. Standing committees shall meet at the call of their chairman or of any two members.
So yes, Ms. Moverian, seems like you would be the one to call that meeting?
Yeah, if you, if a member is requesting a special meeting, I have no objection regarding to that.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that I will not be here. As one of the members of the finance committee, I would not be here that evening.
So?
We don't need, we don't need to move anything. We just need to just?
You have to sign out a meeting notice.
A meeting notice, okay.
So are you calling the meeting? It's either the chairman or two members of the committee?
Yeah, if the request is on the floor, I will entertain that. So I will just prepare and work with Ms. Michael to get my notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And do we need to submit any documents regarding to that, as to purpose and things like that? For the agenda?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, we'll work together.
Purpose of the meeting?
Sure, yes. Well, you know, I stated purpose, but we'll work together on making sure that.
If you can, yes, make sure you copy and send that to Ms. Michael, the purpose for this meeting.
And what you'd like to see? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What you'd like to see?
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's just me who'd like to see.
What you would like to have as at the meeting?
That's what I said, the purpose, the purpose of the meeting should be on the clear on the agenda.
Sure. Thank you. Any other business for government operations?
I will adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor? We're adjourned.
I'd like to call for the city development planning. We have five items on the agenda. The first item is a suburban residential, we recognize the athletic accomplishments and community services
community service of Jay, I'm guessing, Golden Child Brown. Ms. Patrick?
Yes, so, Mr. Brown, who is from Schenectady, just won the interim championship belt in the World Boxing Council USA Silver Super welterweight interim championship. So, he is available on November twenty-fourth. The reason I'm doing it November twenty-fourth, of course, I'm not here next, next week, so I was hoping that to get council support in doing a ceremonial recommend, uh, excuse me, a ceremonial resolution, recognizing that accomplishment. He also does do service in our community, especially with youth, and so I think he's a, you know, positive role model in that sense for youth, so that's, that's what I'd like to propose.
Can I have a motion?
So...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, do you have a question, sir?
Oh, no, I was just gonna highlight the fact that we actually have given Jay a, a resolution before for his boxing accomplishments, and his family came down here, so, but I think this is a level up from when he was before. I think it's really important.
So, in the last four years, we did that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I remember that, okay.
But now he just did the...
Yeah, I'm full supportive of this, this is, yeah.
You say the motion?
So...
I'm second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Torrell, review of amendments to Sections one eighty-three dash four and two sixty-two dash four.
Thank you. So, there's a public hearing on ten twenty-seven, twenty-five, I don't believe anyone spoke on it. The proposed draft is in our packet, so I'd like to see if we can lift that this evening.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, I'm with this.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion of the bulk waste fee. I've, um, got this back and forth, bringing it in again. Getting, you know, emails and concerns about it, and I put it out, you know, leave that for you in the LR that, you know, was implemented in April of twenty-five, soft enforcement through May of twenty-five. Didn't, the rollout didn't go well, you know, people had to lay getting stickers, some residents even wrote up the new program, and has been, has been said at the rail and, and emails that I've received, and also just people talking in general, when I'm out in the community, that they're, you know, we're getting complaints about illegal dumping and more of it, and seeing it myself. So, you know, purchasing stickers, they can only be done in cash or guaranteed funds here at City Hall, it's just challenging for a lot of people, running to people that put their, not knowing about this and didn't have enough sticker, because they didn't get, they said they didn't get the original ones in the mail, put out something they didn't know they couldn't put out, and was taken, brought it back, but still got the fifty-dollar administrative fee. So, it's cumbersome at best, and the, the revenue for twenty-six was only gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars, so I'd just like us to just revisit it and, and see if it's really efficient and cost-effective in terms of what it's costing us to implement it with all the different staffing a part of it and the income that we're getting from it. So, I open it up for discussion. Mr. Ames?
Uh, I can say definitely recall in the conversation at the beginning of last year, yes, beginning of last year, the hesitancy with incorporating both the bulk and the bags, counting the bags, I think it was very prudent of the council to separate those two intentions. I think we've identified over the last few months is no one's happy, and also, with the pain of collecting, and also how things are still being collected, is an ongoing struggle at best, to your point. I think it's important of us to be responsive to the hearing, but also are responsive to the system, where we have to get these conditions under control. So, I know there was a lot of hesitancy with what number of bags do we designate, I would say if we are to pause or do some sort of assessment, I think we have to strong-arm ourselves and to understand how to address the bag counting, just because I think to the waste department and just our workers' claims, as we've had discussions financially, I think we have to make sure we do something and replace if we're going to be adjusting this practice.
Mayor, did you like that?
Yeah, again, I could ask to bring a presentation to the council, the University of Albany, the Center for Technology and Government, the Applied Research Unit there. They're working with us with optical scanners on garbage trucks to size waste to do it. We're actually looking to do that in conjunction with the Scotia and Atlanta, a couple other cities across the state, getting new decline to do that because of the budget hearings, and so that would require a little bit of time to get them lined up to come back and do another presentation, but I believe that's the best path at this point for the city to follow.
Sir, I'm certainly open to having that, and yes, during the budget hearings, we have a lot going on, and that was, we're focusing our attention as it should be, so if, if there's an opportunity for them to come and to give that presentation, I definitely think we have to address this, it's just, it's just out of hand in terms of all the trash everywhere. People are putting it places because they don't have stickers, can't get stickers, whatever it is, so they're putting it in front of an empty lot, so who, who gets fined for that? And, and doesn't get picked up. So, certainly open to that, but what we're bringing in versus the, what it's taking the various departments to do it, it does, it's really not cost-effective at all based on that, so if there's a better solution for us to get this, I'm certainly open to hearing it, and so, Mr. Mayor, if you would like to organize that, the group coming over to do that, I don't have any objections unless anyone else has any, yes, Mr. Moudavarian?
This presentation, is it primarily driven for bulk items or is overall in terms of capacity garbage?
Focused on bulk items, but would also have the ability to review curb lines, front yards, general property that's viewable from the street.
Okay. No, I'm glad that we discussed this, this item, it's, it's been, it's not, it's not, it's not popular over there. A lot of people have been complaining about the sticker program, they're not able to access it, and they are too frustrated to get, and a lot of people have been getting, getting tickets, and they're leaving the garage out, they're moving into different places, and I'm glad that we can revisit this, and I think we need to move forward in doing something better with this program, if we, if we were to keep it, but I think a lot of people, a lot, the feedback out there is that it's not positive, a lot of complaints.
Thank you, Mr. Torrell.
Yes, thank you, so, I do want to say that going back maybe three years, when we started to think about how we can address trash, this probably all would have been settled at that time, was a seventy-dollar, I believe, seventy-some-dollar increase in fees per unit. At that time, the majority of the council decided not to go forward with that, but they did pass half of that on to commercial businesses, and we've lost a lot of commercial businesses because of that. We did organize a trash, I don't wanna say task force, but a trash committee, we spent months at this table, yourself included, trying to come to a reconciliation of how we, what we were gonna do, how we were gonna do it, and then it got to the point where we just up and quit. We quit the, the committee, there was nothing, and we sat around this table, we had Syracuse, Utica, Hales Mills, we had information from everyone, and that's how the sticker program came about, which is, I believe, totally unsuccessful, as I was ripping through my cabinets the other day trying to find a sticker for a bicycle I needed to put out on the curb that wouldn't fit in the back, which brings us to the whole bag situation. You know, right now, whatever fits in a bag, we can put out there, so, you know, if the bicycle fit in the back, would I have been able to put it out? Mr. LaFon seems to think that our bulk is down a little bit because people from other municipalities aren't bringing it in, they realize that there's a fine bringing it in if there's no sticker, and he, he doesn't agree with the dumping. I will say that our...
Could you clarify for me? I don't understand, he doesn't agree with the dumping, meaning what?
That, there's not, he, he doesn't see any, a lot of excess dumping going on in the city. There are, no, excuse me, Mr. Williams, do you, do you see a lot?
I didn't see anything.
Oh, okay, just the smirk on your face.
Okay, so, we're not gonna do that, everybody here makes faces, so, unless somebody says something.
Mr. LaFon doesn't, doesn't quite agree, I mean, our nuisance officers are doing a wonderful job, so whenever some, something's out there, the next, and there's no stickers on it, the nuisance officers get notified, they go off the next day, they verify it on the picture, make a notice for a, a fine, and then they send the truck to pick it up. So, personally, and I'm all over the city, I don't see a lot of dumping, excess dumping, maybe I'm just not looking in the right places, but I'm all over the city. Union Street, you know, going up to my home, again, mattresses, you know, things that don't have stickers on them, and they're out there for probably only twenty-four to forty-eight hours before our courtesy truck comes to, or additional truck comes to pick them up. As far as the bags, we've sat around this table many times, and the council didn't mock to seem to do a sticker program and then, and then come to a bag limit for everyone, but right now, there's no bag limit, and, you know, people can put out fifty, sixty bags if they want, cleaning out an apartment as long as it fits in a bag, so it's really not helping what we need to do here. So, I would be in favor of the mayor's proposal, get that in there, see what we need to do, and, and then, quite frankly, the large majority of the council took our hundred-and-four-dollar proposed mayor's increase for trash this past, our budget season, and cut in half or, put a little bit out there without even discussing trash at our, at our budget meetings, so then that was, rightfully so, I should have brought it forward, I'm still kicking myself for that, not bringing trash up, but then all of a sudden seeing it put in the budget as a decrease to that, which I think was totally wrong, but anyway, that's about all I have to say.
So, let me just, so, I, I do see, and I guess it depends on what part of the city you are, there's clearly some illegal dumping, and it does happen in more neighborhoods than it does in others, perhaps not neighborhoods that you visit, that people feel more comfortable doing it, particularly, let's talk about behind eight ninety, because there, there it is, and so, there's no question, we've done a cleanup back there, and now it's, it's happening again, so it definitely is happening, that is not without, without question, that is without question, so, and, and so, you wanted to bring up the point that I was part of the committee, and absolutely I was, and for, and in the first three months, I sent you a proposal to everyone, yourself included, that says, here's how we should address some of these things, and also, that was never implemented, never even discussed, as a matter of fact, I watched you the day, since we want to talk about what happened, I watched you the day, you saw it, and took it and shoved it in your folder like, I'm not even interested in this.
We're never gonna do that.
It happened, so, anyway, I continued to meet, but nothing was moving forward, and there's, I'm not gonna sit at any table, regardless of the table, if there's nothing moving forward, so I sent a letter to the mayor, and everyone else involved saying I was stepping away, because we weren't coming to any conclusions, whatever I was putting forward was not being received, and that's fine, but it didn't make sense to be there if there was, if I wasn't contributing, and so, also invited council member, any other council member, to take my place at that table, so, I don't, you know, you want to personalize it, and I'm giving my reasons, and I made my reasons clear and very public to everyone as to why I wasn't there, we weren't making any progress, and during those discussions, the bulk sticker program never came about, not while I was there. That was something that after it was all said and done, then Mr. LaFon came to, to present about the bulk sticker program, so, but again, we need to discuss this because it's not doing well. We're not getting, we're not getting positive feedback from the community, it's just not doing well, and again, there was only twenty-five thousand put in the budget, so that says a lot, and the scenario you just described about somebody coming and seeing it, taking a picture, sending somebody back, and then somebody come and take it, that obviously is a lot of expense for, for some, a small amount of income. Mr. Williams?
I think Mr. Farley's first.
Mr. Farley?
Certainly, so, I was just gonna highlight the fact that there were multiple conversations at this table, and some of the considerations that came out of the conversation was that it wasn't not only wise, it would be completely inconsiderate to increase taxes, increase fees, limit bags, and add stickers, stickers to, for bulk items that wants our residents, because what we're seeing happening is a, is a, by pretty much everyone's account, a very insufficient system, and if you let the insufficient sys, inefficient system go on for a long time, and then you want to, with one swoop, instead of, instead of doing the due diligence, of doing the research, getting the data, including the data, the lived experience of the people of the city, then that would be, that was clearly the wrong way to go, based on the fact that, that just agreeing to do the sticker program, the information, and, and how that's turning out, should be a clear testament as to why all the things that you discussed period were actually a bad idea, that's why I didn't support it.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, so I'd say just a vocal point is, increasing fees doesn't improve systems, it almost sincerely perpetuates inefficiencies, and I know that that is a consideration that is often highlighted in proposed budgets of just increasing fees, and I think sometimes it requires us to have innovative perspectives to evaluate other means and mechanisms, taking consideration aside from ourselves and our abilities to incorporate some of these financial adjustments, understanding that there are significant impacts on people throughout our community who might not be so able to, and that's why dumping has and continues to kind of challenge, you can just drive in some other areas in the city, I've been a part of three cleanups in the past two months, dumping is happening, and if we're not recognizing it, it's because we're not looking hard enough, but sincerely, if you were cautioning that the council botched the recommendations from the committee that you were a part of, I would say we saved it. In fact, if we were to include bulk and bag regulation, sincerely, I think we would be looking at even more issues and concerns, so I think although we identified now, once lived in this process that is not working, I don't think there's an issue with that. We tried something, it failed, I think there's an issue, we continue on now this process hoping for a different outcome, we learned a lot through our discussions, I think what we identified at this table right now is, we need to continue the difficult conversations of how many bags do we outline, and I want to make sure I give consideration where it's due. I'm excited that the mayor has highlighted an opportunity with one of our local universities, definitely, I appreciate recognizing when we can incorporate technology more into our municipalities, it is the wave of the future, so I'm excited to hear what they have to present, and hopefully this is an option moving forward, but resorting to fees is the first step, is, I will never support that.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, the decisions are made by the city council, there are a number of recommendations out there, Ben Walsh, the mayor of Syracuse, done an expensive study, made that entire packet that they paid for available to Schenectady, it was this council that decided on the sticker program, decided on no limit on the bags. You know, that's the facts, you can talk about staff making recommendations going back and forth, but it comes down to the decisions that are made here, and what I have in place now is a system that is unmanageable, because we do have a sticker program, bulk items, but if you put it in a bag, there's no bag limit, have to pick it up, if it's just sitting there, it's supposed to have a sticker on it, you put a bag on it, I gotta pick it up, it's crazy.
It is crazy.
That was decided by the city council.
Well, we make our decisions based on information that's brought to us by the department, we are part-time legislators, and once we make a, once we hear from the full-time staff on the recommendations, that is what we make our decisions on.
Except that you're adapting the budget.
Some of that we listen to, and all of it we didn't, that's part of it, it's just like, with this particular thing we're talking about, we were, it was proposed that we have bags and stickers, we rejected the bags, so we don't always listen to all of it, but they came forward, and that was a sticker program, he just felt like it was gonna go, we, again, based on a full-time employee, made our recommendation, and now we're looking at it, and as Mr. Williams has said, so we looked at it, we approved it, we're looking at the results of it and saying, it's not working, so we're coming back again to discuss it. There's nothing wrong with saying you tried something and it's not working, as a matter of fact, I think that's, that's the prudent way to go, when you look at it, it didn't work, let's revisit it and see how we can do it differently. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think you covered my point.
We will bring this back for further discussion, and we will look forward to the mayor having the presentation from University of Albany.
It's the Center for Technology and Government.
Center for Technology.
To the Applied Research Unit, University of Albany.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, the next two items are for property sales, and will have to be property sales or rejection of property discussions, and that will, we have to be done in executive session, so this time I ask for a motion to recess.
Motion to recess?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess, thank you.
I'd like to call over the Claims Committee.
I'd like to call over the Claims Committee, we have one item on the agenda tonight, that is a discussion, here is versus Schenectady, I'm appreciative the conversation needs to be held in executive session, so may I have a motion to enter executive session? I will second that, all in favor? All right, here in executive session.
Members of the public will have to leave.